Welcome back to the convo couch everyone, I am Pasta Jardula.
And I'm Furella.
And Johnny Sue is still spinning on those ones and twos.
Fam.
You gotta get some energy.
Fam.
Let's go.
Oh, so today in studio, we have Jose Trinidad Castañera. Is that correct? Okay, the reason I introduced you is because Pasta has a tendency to butcher names that are not John Smith. So, or like some Italian version, you butchered, you butchered that one too, by the way.
Which one?
The Ciceroni.
No, I said it the Brooklyn way, he's just, you know, he was from Jersey and whatnot.
Anyway, this is Jose Trinidad Castañera and he is running for city council in District 4. And he is a climate community organizer and we need more people like that to run for city council. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me, so excited.
The OC Fullerton, my man. So, let's just jump right into it and stuff. First off, disclaimer, you look like Julian Castro, what do you have to say about that? We had to do that on film and stuff like that.
I think that's what he told me too.
You're better looking and you're, and you're smart, because I don't think you would, uh, well, we'll get to that part of the whole thing and stuff. What inspired you to run for city council? This is your second time out.
Right.
What inspired you initially and again to run a second time?
Right, so in my neighborhood in Fullerton, people are dying. People are literally dying on the streets and I can't get around it. You just, that's what you enter, once you enter Fullerton, any entry point. And so, obviously, things need to change. Um, we have a massive homeless crisis that's not just in Fullerton, but of course, we're doing our part and we can do more.
Yeah.
And so, uh, that's just one of the many examples of things that have gone wrong over the past decade of failed leadership. And that's what I'm hoping to change, uh, when I'm elected to city council on November 3rd.
Yeah.
And what, um, what do you think is most pressing in your particular area?
Absolutely, it's housing and homelessness.
Yeah.
Um, one and the same, uh, there's homelessness because there's not enough housing at affordable or even just like a free and public housing subsidized, permanent supportive housing. So, housing is a very complex issue, but I'm doing my due diligence. I want to make sure that when I'm elected, I understand what's at stake, whether it's anti-displacement or anti-ditification, or just the lack of availability. I myself am submitting my, um, architectural plans for ADUs. So, that's another solution that people in single-family homes can use if they wanted to.
ADU?
Yes.
Which is?
It's an accessory dwelling unit, so it's commonly known as a granny flat or an in-law unit. Uh, nowadays, we have everybody at every income level and every age needing somewhere to live. And, uh, I think this is the number one way we're gonna be able to address it, at least in our part of Fullerton.
Have you gone to city council, by the way, and, and talked about these things? Can you give a little example?
Yeah.
I heard you say, I went to city council like four times this week. Well, tell us about what you go and what you talk about and what you've experienced there.
Right, so I've been going to Fullerton City Council since 2014, when I was a class assignment, uh, way back when. And I just fell in love with, uh, the drama, the action. Uh, I mean, sometimes, uh, people will talk about watching Netflix or TV and I'm like, watch your city council meeting, you'd be surprised. Um, it's much more of a circus than you can possibly imagine.
Yeah, so, uh, question on your, um, real, real estate developers are a huge problem. That has created a system where we have luxury homes completely empty. And these homes are being bought by very wealthy people, some people who aren't even from America, who only come and visit, uh, you know, for a certain amount of time. Meanwhile, we have people living in the streets. How do you propose to solve something like that? Because there, you know, you do gotta build to a certain degree, but at the same time, it seems like we're only building for, for profit, for luxury, um, sort of, uh, real estate.
Right, and I am just anti-greed, anti-corruption at a fundamental core of who I am. And what we've seen in Fullerton is a very greedy, uh, real estate developer, speculative, uh, developer, uh, come in and purchase the land from right underneath the feet of these, uh, senior retired mobile home, uh, owners.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so unfortunately, many of them are being forced to leave Fullerton, if not the state of California. They're not able to live and a lot of them are afraid of becoming homeless and dying on our streets, which further exacerbates our, uh, public health and our homelessness crisis. And so, they've been coming out to city council for a year and a half, uh, if not longer. They're called the Rancho La Paz, uh, homeowners. And, uh, what's really sad is that there is no policy, no law in the books, whether local or state, that protects them from this kind of greedy monopolization of land and speculative, uh, uh, land use for, uh, luxury and for-profit housing. And unfortunately, uh, that, that's, you know, where the pitfalls are. But on the flip side, uh, we see that that's the opportunity for this new legislative session. Um, I think our Assemblywoman, Sharon Kruksilva is introducing something that will help address some of that crisis. And when we look at building more, because at the end of the day, we're in a housing crisis and that's pretty much fact. You, we're gonna have to find places that are going to boost equity, really, because we've seen redlining in our city. Uh, where the south side of Fullerton, if you're on the wrong side of the tracks, you're in, you know, the blighted areas where there's, uh, increasing concentration of homelessness. Whereas if you're in the north side of the Fullerton, you're in the wealthier hills and there's bike paths and it's many trees. And so, really addressing, uh, the inequity, uh, in our housing stock by bringing more housing to areas that are considered more NIMBY-ish, right? They have their McMansions and they don't want to have poor people living near them.
Yeah.
Well, that's gotta change, that's absolutely, uh, what I hope to bring to the narrative in our housing story.
Well, let me talk a little bit about that too, because you're in Orange County, whatnot. And you know, we see a lot of these laws when it comes, uh, obviously homelessness is a problem, whatnot. But you're gonna have a lot of like conservative centrist-minded people in Orange County, whatnot. And they want to have their investments protected too as well. Not that they're uber-rich, but with the new Airbnb law that went into play in LA, it also affected a lot of my friends who would rent out their Airbnb just to make ends meet. They got punished in the process. How can you assure your people in Orange County that you're not gonna just attack them and not be concerned for their, their needs and their wants as well?
Right, so if we can increase housing stock, that would address the multifaceted, um, Airbnb and a short-term, uh, rental issue. Uh, in next-door, uh, city of Buena Park, they recently passed a new city ordinance that will help regulate some of that. So, that way, uh, guests will respect some of the overnight, um, you know, volume, uh, laws, I guess. But at the end of the day, if people want to build an additional, you know, garage conversion or granny flat, whether it's a separate unit or attached to the house and, you know, rent it out to survive, whether it's like a long-term rental or short-term rental, they, they need to have that option. And we need to explore more financing options that'll help low-income residents benefit first, because that's who lives in the single-family homes that can actually do these things. And that's who needs the additional income in order to survive.
Yeah, in Buena Park, it seems like they did that. So therefore, the, the, uh, hotel lobbyists or the motel lobbyists can get their people back into their, their rooms that were empty and really punish the everyday average middle-income house owner who wanted to rent out their, you know, their room. So, I mean, it's a concern, because I, at the end of the day, I understand we do have a problem. But, uh, I think we have to have proper solutions. From what I'm hearing in LA, that isn't the case, I'm glad you addressed it, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, so regarding climate change, you're, uh, you know, you're a climate community organizer. So, how do you plan on making an impact on a local level in terms of the, you know, the struggle with climate change?
Well, uh, this is my bread and butter. Um, I, well, vegan butter, I should say. Really, there is so much we can do at the local level and I don't have as much optimism for federal-level, um, advocacy and on climate change. Uh, I think everything, all, all politics are local. And so, uh, as a city council member, we can, uh, introduce community choice energy and create a new public authority that would procure energy on our behalf. Right now, we're under a monopoly, SoCal Edison. And, uh, what we've seen across the state with PG&E and SDG&E is that they're raising the rates, they're gonna try to cover their asses, excuse my language, for the wildfire liabilities that they're responsible for.
Yeah.
Uh, that they've been paying shareholders and company executives for a long time without really reinvesting back into the maintenance of these distribution lines. And so, that's just one example, because energy, uh, emissions from energy is the highest. So, we need to tackle that as well as all the other things, whether it's, uh, composting or, um, having, you know, community composting centers at schools for people to churn their trash into soil and garden again. Because at the end of the day, from a physics-based timeline and from like a scientific perspective, we can decarbonize and carbon capture better if we focus on soil.
Yeah.
Yeah, and regarding, um, like nuclear power plants and, um, you know, just the ocean part of it, what is your stance on all, all of that?
Right, so I'm heavily against, uh, what's happening at the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station. And, uh, it's really unfortunate that they're deciding to store, uh, nuclear waste on site right with the, right on the beach as sea levels begin to rise and we're seeing the king tides get higher and higher. So, of course, I am actually against nuclear power, I think that's, uh, not, um, it's not safe. It's maybe talked about as clean energy, but it's not renewable.
Right.
It's absolutely the wrong direction we need to go. And we do need to head towards safe, clean renewable energy, that's solar and wind primarily. But, uh, there's talk of offshore wind, there's talk of algae farms, there's all these new ways that we can start thinking about, uh, energy. And, uh, let me just say that, uh, we need to completely electrify and decarbonize our world. Uh, we cannot be relying on dirty fuels of the past and we have to address those wrongs in a equitable and environmentally just way where people who were historically disadvantaged or, um, I, I, I like to say, uh, exploited, they were exploited, really. Are first in line for, um, public funding and, uh, regenerating their, uh, their communities, our communities.
I'm a civil liberties guy, you know, really big guy, I bring up every single show. But the best way a city council can help me out, and we've gone to our city council, is to give us an open, free and fair internet. And we've encouraged our city council to introduce legislation that would bring us a municipal internet service. Would you consider, as a Fullerton city council member, introducing a, you know, a legislation that might bring municipal internet to Fullerton?
Absolutely, I mean Bernie's plan for municipal broadband is the gold standard. And two years ago, Fullerton City Council subcontracted with, uh, Fullerton Hi-Fi, I believe. Uh, so a local, uh, a local company bringing, um, high-speed, uh, internet cables to the city. They're building, um, a, a little, uh, a little center, uh, in my district. So, I've been communicating with them to see if they can help beautify the area by inviting our local school districts to work on murals to cover that like bland electrical box, uh, setup that they have.
Oh, that's good.
Right, so I mean, it's not the best option, but it's set, it's definitely a step in the right direction.
And regarding infrastructure and maintenance, a lot of, one of the things that I mostly run into here in, uh, Los Angeles is transportation issues. Where, like the train system still needs some work, they have a hundred-year plan in Santa Monica that, uh, you know, for just regular trains, for a train to West Hollywood, for instance. How important is that in Orange County where there's not really much of an infrastructure there or trains even for that matter? What could you do, uh, or propose with your, uh, your, your friends in city council to help kind of make Orange County more accessible via public transportation?
Oh my goodness, thank you for this, I, I'm so happy you asked this question, because I spent two hours working on my public comments for the SCAG, so the Southern California Association of Governments, a SoCal Connect Transportation Plan. And I've been heavily involved in transportation advocacy, public transit advocacy in particular, um, for the number, past two years, I would say. Um, so, the way we're gonna go about this is that we have to dramatically change, you know, leadership throughout the entire county, because it's a regional issue. But I would definitely, uh, continue to push for more, um, uh, purchasing an electric bus fleet. So, uh, definitely, at the same time that we're improving frequency, because we have very low frequency, which in turn reduces ridership. Push for, uh, bus-only lanes, so transit-only, uh, lanes, uh, or mixed-traffic lanes, however you like to say it. That's a bare minimum, uh, that's, that, for me, that's a stepping stone, because overall, as population continues to grow, as our cities are becoming, uh, denser, whether, you know, we intend for it to happen or not, we can't stop people from having babies or from moving into the California. Um, but as we go into this direction, if we're not increasing, uh, public transit services, if we're not, uh, increasing the frequency, if we're not making it a more comfortable rider experience, where bus shelters are not just like anti-homeless spikes, for example, but they're actually like benches and shade, shade structures and they have, um, timing, they have, uh, LED signs for, uh, uh, estimated time of arrival for the next buses. These are the direction, the, these are some of the things that we can do. And, uh, I, I'm definitely gonna commit my life towards getting us that, because it's not even just about me anymore. I grew up, um, on and off the bus and I don't think, uh, it was a real good solution for us in Fullerton. But for the next generations that are gonna be less, uh, car-dependent or less private car-dependent, uh, that they're going to need, um, light rail, for example, on some of the major corridors in Beach Boulevard and Harbor Boulevard and State College.
Yeah, and it's also connected to the environment as well, so.
Well, as an environmentalist, a lot of libertarians and conservatives get really nervous, because when they think small businesses, they think regulations and stuff. And a lot of red tape could be there. How could you assure a lot of the conservatives, libertarians and people who are just not on the democratic side, that if you become a city councilman, you're not gonna over-regulate them with red tape to open up small businesses, like a lot of sometimes, uh, climate change activists get accused of? Because they want to put on all these regulations for things. How can we assure the small business owners don't get conflated with them?
Right, so my family, my dad is a small business owner and I helped him with, uh, his restaurant, Bonito Sinaloa. And unfortunately, on New Year's Eve, there was a three-alarm fire where an illegal cannabis, uh, grow operation operating the back of a massage parlor in Anaheim exploded. And it took out a restaurant, so we don't have a restaurant anymore, uh, it's been closed. And, uh, now we're dealing with the city to try to reopen our restaurant as quickly as possible. And going through this process, realizing what is necessary as a small business owner, as an entrepreneur, like there are a lot of barriers. And we, like, of course, we're willing to work with the city to achieve the highest code, uh, the highest standards for the code enforcement. Um, but at the same time, it's expensive, it's lengthy, it's, um, uh, it's discouraging. And I want to make sure that people are able to start new businesses, if, especially if it's in a circular economy or a sustainability, uh, related field. Uh, so I, I want to encourage that more, I want people to really have that entrepreneurial spirit again. And not to say that we need to continue the, a system of capitalism based on profit and greed, an example, but we have examples of sustainable businesses from, you know, solar companies that work on energy to these, um, to waste companies like Waste Not OC, it's a nonprofit that collects food from restaurants and, and all that. So, there's different examples and different models, I'm a big fan of the co-op model. So, I would love to see more of that, because that's really the, that's really that justice, uh, in our, uh, market economy. So, I have lots of ideas.
Yeah.
But I always want to make sure I'm working on them in tandem and in collaboration with people that are interested in actually implementing them, because I can't do it all.
I mean, your parents own a restaurant, you know, I, I'm a restaurant guy, I'm a guy, wasn't college, you know, I had some college, wasn't educated. And a lot of the red tape, as I went into all this stuff, which is so confusing for small businesses. So, I know in Orange County, a lot of, you know, there's gonna be a lot of people in the middle who can be like, we hate this red tape, these regulations. And I know as a, a climate activist, you gotta make sure there's standards in play. So, I'd love to see more of your plans and, uh, once again, thanks for addressing it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, I'm a co-op person too, I think that's the future. I think we need more of that, as small businesses, that helps small businesses right now. On a state level, we are, uh, you know, cutting taxes for corporations, we need to address small businesses. This is something that all the candidates could be better on, um, addressing small business concerns, because a lot of the, like he says, a lot of the, the Republicans opposition to Bernie Sanders is, oh, he, he doesn't support small businesses, that's not the case, we just gotta explain it better. Like, how is this gonna help the mom-and-pop places as that we see closing down left and right, because corporations are taking over? So, whatever you can do on the local level and co-ops can certainly happen, will really, uh, help us out. So, along those lines though, we're very concerned with this public school system right now, not just nationally, but statewide. There is a huge battle between teachers of public schools and charter schools. What is your stance on charter schools? Can they be good or are they generally, you know, just not beneficial to our education?
So, I am a huge public school advocate, you know, born and raised, gone through public school all my life, community college, Cal State. And I am gonna stand by, uh, stand by public schools forever. I mean, this is where the funding should go, because, uh, honestly, this is where, uh, people who are working two to three jobs send their kids in hopes that they have a better life than what they're dealing with as adults. And I know there's good examples of charter schools, the environmental charter schools are teaching some way progressive curriculum that I feel like could be a model, uh, for public schools. And it's, uh, you know, historically, they were intended to be, you know, uh, testing grounds for these new curricula. Um, there's an indigenous charter school in East LA, I think Anawal, Anawal, okay, already bushed it, so. So, uh, you know, uh, so there, there's room and there's a need for different curriculum. But overall, funding should be dedicated towards public schools, because that's who, uh, takes in everyone, especially people like my sister. My sister, she has Down's syndrome and so she's gone through Fullerton Public Schools all her life. Charter schools wouldn't have taken her.
Yeah.
So, uh, obviously, if there was more, uh, willingness on the charter schools' part to be inclusive, instead of just on paper or saying that they're, uh, addressing the needs of, of certain disadvantaged community, disenfranchised community, um, then, yeah, maybe I'd be more open to it, but there's no structural accountability and there's no local governance that's really gonna say, hey, the parents are, you know, pissed off at you as a principal and you're misspending our funds, like what has been happening in Florida.
Yeah, oh yeah, tell, tell me about it.
That's a nuanced approach though, I really like that.
I, I do, I mean, I think.
It's a test ground for what career, because that's the problem with, a lot of these public schools, the curriculum is just ridiculous, sorry.
Well, yeah, but I was just gonna say, I guess the answer to that would be to take some of the, the ideas these charter schools have, um, and instead, because I feel like charter schools still privatize education and we wanna, we wanna kind of get away from that. We want to have all of the public be accessible, have access to these very progressive environmental, environmental's curriculum. So, to implement that structure, to address education would be to implement some of that within that. So, you wouldn't necessarily have to go rely on a privatized type of education, right? But I, I really liked what you had to say on that, that was a good answer.
And you're, and you're part Native American, you said you're Latino and Native American, so I have to ask you, how do you feel about your girl Elizabeth Warren attacking Bernie Sanders? Last week and stuff, let's get a little mainstream politics, because you look like a guy who's not gonna settle on city council. You might be trying to move up, so we, let's hit you with mainstream politics and foreign policy this part. What are you gonna do about your girl though, Elizabeth Warren over here?
You know, uh, much respect to anyone who runs for public office, because, you know, public service is a public sacrifice, or it's a personal sacrifice.
Should be.
And, um, with, uh, her story where, you know, her family shared that, you know, she's Cherokee and blah, 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 and I'm like, okay, sure, whatever. And then it comes out from all these native, uh, genealogy experts in the entire native community that are like, no, it's not acceptable, like, don't lie about being native. That's, that, that struck a chord with me when she went, uh, to Bernie Sanders and said, did you lie about me about, you know?
Called me a liar.
Yeah, you called me a liar on national TV and I'm like, Elizabeth, please, like, you were lying about being native for so long. And I don't know if there's a, you know, where that falls on the scale, but you didn't even address that and you never apologized. So, okay, you're gonna go after Bernie, like, what about the valid concerns that the native community has brought to you? When are you gonna address that? So, um, I, I have a lot of respect for everyone that runs for office, including Elizabeth, but at the same time, like, she's not my candidate.
Yeah, she wasn't at Standing Rock, but Tulsi Gabbard was, how do you feel about Tulsi Gabbard?
Tulsi Gabbard, I have always seen her as like, uh, positioning herself as that foreign policy expert in the debate narratives. And I respect her for that, there's been some issues, but, um, uh, she wasn't even the only one at Standing Rock. And, you know, I, I'm glad that there's more women of color on that debate stage, but Jill Stein was also at Standing Rock and I, I think Bernie was there too.
He didn't go to Standing Rock per se, but he was always watching the situation, he was advocating.
Yeah.
He had a lot of rallies with Native Americans talking about, his eye was there, he wasn't like Obama, well, we'll just see how it plays out, no.
Yeah, I know. Um, and just to, I, to close on the Elizabeth Warren thing, I mean, I think it's, you know, the media has exacerbated the situation, they, they love to profit off the drama. But what is very real is that nobody wanted to talk about the Elizabeth Warren, uh, taking over, co-opting the Native American heritage, because Donald Trump had called her Pocahontas, so nobody wanted to like go that low. But the reality is, she as a white woman kind of acted like a colonizer. I mean, this is, this is coming from someone that's a Latino descent to that, you know, sometimes we as Latinos, I mean, I specifically have to put, you, I'd had to put white on it, because there was no, there was just white, black, Asian, right? And like, no, that, that, because it was race, not ethnicity. So, the fact that Elizabeth Warren actually wrote her name as a Native American to me is a little ridiculous. And so, she's never actually answered to that, because we have always felt as progressives, that was a little blow to take. But it has, it isn't really, and I think, um, yeah, she owes everybody in the Native American community an apology.
Well, I had a nightmare, uh, about whether or not she became the candidate from the democratic field to go against Donald Trump in the debates.
Yeah.
I actually had a nightmare that the first thing Donald Trump would say is that Pocahontas.
He would address her like that.
Yeah, and I thought like, holy crap, like, this is a disaster and it was just a nightmare. It, it was literally just a dream nightmare and I would hope that, you know, that's not the case, if, if anything happens.
So, how do you feel about impeachment? Because I feel like Donald Trump has made many impeachable offenses, but I don't necessarily feel like the Democrats are going about it the right way. How do you feel about impeachment?
Well, I was listening to the trials for this week and been following it very closely. And I have to say that, at the end of the day, uh, this is all going down in our history books and what we teach our kids. And I hope that we did something, like, just 20 years from now, 30 years from now, what are the kids gonna say about this horrible, horrible, evil dictator, um, pretending to be a king? And whether or not, uh, it goes through the Senate as a fair trial with all the evidence, right? They've already denied motions to listen to, you know, really credible evidence. Um, I, I think, I think it's necessary just to show how difficult it is to work in this polarized, uh, Congress right now, in this polarized Senate.
Yeah.
People need to put some really big pressure on the Senate side to just follow the law and just be respectful. But they're not willing to do that, they're already skirting the law in multiple cases and they're making motions that are against the, uh, our national interests. And as, as much as I'm critical of, you know, our national government, I think right now, we need to remain united. We have a climate crisis that's destroying the world. And once the, our summer season kicks in and the wildfires begin in California, we're gonna need each other more than ever. We're gonna need people from all across the United States to come to help fight the fires in California. And we would do the same in disaster cases, like what happened in Hurricane Sandy and, and Louisiana and so on.
Let me push back for a second, with that kind of language, this horrible, horrible dictator, king of a person, isn't that kind of a little hypocritical if you use that at Donald Trump? Where you allow a person like Obama or Clinton, we weren't using that same type of language towards them, when they've committed a lot of the same atrocities, a lot of the same crimes, a lot of the foreign policy blunders, whatnot, you know, I mean, they were, their deep state, where their, Obama's, uh, Director of Intelligence, DOJ, you know, told the Americans he lied and said that we, they weren't spying on us when Snowden really, uh, revealed that. I mean, that's a fascist type of government. Don't you think some of those criticisms, especially in Orange County, might play against you if you use that type of language solely directed just towards Donald Trump?
Listen, I'm, I'm just critical, I'm just critical of, uh, everyone who wants to take a position in power. And even when you mentioned that I'm, I look like the type of person that wants, wants to run for higher office in the future, I really don't see myself like that, I see myself as really focused and grounded in what's happening in my own backyard. Ten years down the. Ten years down the line, who knows if I'm gonna be running for office again? Who knows if I'm gonna be buying a farm out in the middle of nowhere and working on decarbonizing and carbon capture?
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, that, for me, like, the future, uh, the future's changing so rapidly that, uh, I'm open, but I'm not committed to having a political career for the long term. I think I'm gonna focus on the city of Fullerton, um, uh, for my first term. And then if I run again for a second term, then, um, I want to make sure that there's more leaders willing to take my place. And when it comes to national politics, yes, I, obviously, I'm a person that is, uh, I, I hope I'm educated in this. And then, uh, I, I think having an opinion and using my, uh, my freedom of speech to speak on it, I think that's valuable. But I will respect anyone if they're in my community and they're in my neighborhood, and I'm canvassing and knocking on their doors, and they say that they're gonna vote for Trump. Like, sure, whatever, you're in California, your vote doesn't-
Pretty much.
It matters at the local level. It matters at the local level, but presidential-
Exactly. Um, so a little bit of foreign policy. I know you're running locally, but what is your opinion on, um, US interventionism? I'm not sure if you are aware, but we tried, uh, Donald Trump and, um, his minions tried to go after, uh, Juan, uh, Maduro and install Juan Guaido in Venezuela. Now, we know that Venezuela is experiencing a humanitarian crisis, but is it our place to go in there and sort of dictate what they should do?
Yeah, so the United States government has a very sordid history of interventionism in Latin America in particular, of course, across the entire world. But when I'm really paying attention to my brothers and sisters across Latin America, um, we see that it's just time and time again failed policy intervention. And, uh, we have records, we have documented evidence of, uh, CIA and other government agencies meddling in foreign affairs when, uh, we don't know if, who was making those decisions. So, um, sure, we have some idea, but we really don't know. And I think that we're heading into a new period where we have the Brazilian government really following the lead of our presidential administration and absolutely committing genocide on indigenous peoples in the Amazon, who are, you know, using every moment of their waking lives to protect the Amazon. And of course, colloquially, we know it's the, the lungs of the earth, but, uh, with our physics-based timeline and what we're seeing out of the latest IPCC, uh, reports on climate change, if we lose the Amazon, we lose the world.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's something where we do need to show US leadership on. And that's just one example in one country, but of course, there's parallels, and there's underlying themes that go into Ecuador, Peru, Central America, et cetera.
Yeah, and then when it comes to Brazil, we always talk about, if you kill the pig, if the pink dolphin dies, we die. You got a pink dolphin? That's the one in the Amazon, because that is the lungs and whatnot.
It, it is.
It really is. Jose, this was a great interview. I, you know, what I mentioned, that's maybe you run for the future, is because, uh, I think you're so nuanced on a lot of these situations. I think you'd make a great city council person, uh, for Fullerton. Uh, we obviously agree on some of the language moving forward, whatnot. But, uh, you know, hey, man, I, I respect you, and I know a lot of climate activists, they really cannot stand Donald Trump, because he really has been awful on the fucking climate. And I will give you that 100%. Uh, and, um, yeah, tell the people out there where they can find you and where they can give you a few bucks to help put you in District Four seat.
Definitely look for me on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook, at Jose T. Castaneda III. Um, I'll be launching my campaign website, jose, the number four, fullerton.com in just a, a week. And I hope to see you out there canvassing, staying civically engaged, attending your city council meetings, because this is a movement, not a moment. It's not about just one candidate, it's about all of us. So be sure to find me on social media, Jose T. Castaneda III.
Guys, ladies and gentlemen, let's get this man on the, on the ballot box. Let's get him on there. Let's get him on there. Let's help him out. Sell him a dollar, sell him $2. Thank you so much. Come on back and tell us what it's like after you win that jungle primary. For Pasta Giardula.
Fiorella.
Johnny Sue on those ones and twos.
We'll be right back.
Jose in the house, we love him. Not Julian Castro.